All right, it's eight thirty, so I'll call the meeting to order. We'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Item number three is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Is there anyone who would like to put anything on our agenda? It appears not. Item four is the approval of the agenda. We will add a ten-ten executive session scheduled for legal counsel. Other than that, are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second. At all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close name. Motion carries. Item five is the consent agenda items. We have approval of the minutes, approval of the travel requests, approval of personnel action notices, and approval of the human services report. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion been made in second. Any comments on any of these reports? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item six is routine business, approval of the claims. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion been made in second. And any comments on the claims? Any questions or comments? We have both the claims and the July cell phones. Hearing none, call the roll.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we'll start into our department head reports, and we'll start with Brian.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, little update on our projects that are going around out in the county. June eighteenth, the DOT informed me that the contractor, Pram Construction, had, uh, began work now after the flood. Since the water levels were below the eight-foot floods, or at the gauge, were below the eight-foot mark, they started doing work, uh, so that, which allows them to place their cofferdams. And then, uh, this past weekend on Sunday, uh, it caused the river to raise a foot and a half on Monday, and they are now pulled off-site again. So I was excited to get them going, and then Mother Nature didn't cooperate once again. Aside from that, June nineteenth, met with Banner Associates in regards to the projects on our 2019 overlay projects. Uh, County Road Eight is completed. Uh, we completed our graveling, and the striping was completed, and that road is done. Same with Brookings County Road Forty-Six. We got a little bit left to do on the, uh, approaches on that road. And then County Road Thirty-Two was also complete, or completed, uh, last week. The striping has not been completed as of yesterday, so we're still waiting on that. And then Thirty-Five has not began yet. Met with them. They were intending to begin work on it. I'm going to have a meeting with them, uh, to figure out when we can foresee our timeline here, but if it gets pushed late in the year, I'm wondering, uh, if this is may, maybe something we want to start thinking about now. If it pushes us off too late in the year, we may not be able to get our other process done to protect that investment. But we'll, uh, look, look at that later here. Uh, June twenty-fifth, I was out and met with Banner on the Deer Creek, uh, Station Bridge. They began setting the deck units. Doesn't seem like the rain has affected the construction on this much. They've been moving along pretty fast. I foresee this bridge tentatively being opened by, uh, the end of July. So, tentatively. Went to a, uh, US Fourteen Stakeholders Group on Wednesday with Marty, uh, June twenty-sixth. I learned a lot about the accident history, and I think Marty might have a little more to touch on. I know he was pretty involved in that meeting, and it was a very, very good informational meeting for me. But like I said, it was mainly those areas that affected our county roads. You know, uh, we didn't, there wasn't a whole lot of discussion around what happened around the city of Brookings, so it was primarily focused on the areas west of Brookings. So... Called to set up a meeting yesterday with Banner Associates to determine what's going to happen with our final, uh, checklist item on our, on our road projects. And then also this last week, uh, I didn't get it in my report because it happened on Wednesday night. There was a, uh, rollover accident in Hamlin County. So then the next day, we had to temporarily close to through traffic on County Road Six. Uh, those control measures were taken down on, on Saturday. So, it was, uh, quite the spill up there.
Any questions? What was, what was the material spilled?
Uh, I don't...
No, Bob told me.
Roundup and diesel fuel and, yeah.
Okay.
And it was pretty close in vicinity to the Sioux River, so that was, uh, another thing. And they had to create some berms, so they, they closed down the road for two, three days.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Brian.
You bet.
We'll follow up with Marty.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yesterday, when my report was made, we had thirty-four inmates. Now we have thirty-nine, uh, as of last night, and, uh, I don't know if the state's attorney has got the word yet, but, uh, the two Florida guys are, came in rolling in about four this morning, so, okay. Anyway, so, um, we, we continue to stay busy, uh, in the jail, the one hundred and twenty-three under twenty-four-seven program, so that stays busy, uh, with, uh, everyday PBTs and SCRAMs and, uh, UAs and so forth. Just to kind of recap, on Wednesday, uh, Brian and myself was, was in Volga with the US Fourteen study, and, uh, they had, um, a lot of good da, data on, on traffic accidents, a lot of rear-end traffic accidents, which, oh, I, a lot of them were taken by my department in the Highway Patrol. So they talked about turning lanes and those types of things on... Of course, I suggested they should make it a four lane. But it'd be interesting how to get, be a cost factor through the Arlington Lakes and so forth, but, uh, I said that'll eliminate a lot of our problems, but, you know, when you look back at a lot of the accidents that occur on fourteen and the interstate, a lot of it's drivers there, too. A lot of it's overdriving road conditions, too. But the turning lanes and so forth would really help, because it showed a lot of rear-end accidents on, on Highway Fourteen. The concerns that, uh, Volga and myself had was pedestrian safety in, in the city of Volga. Once, uh, Casey's is building, uh, are gonna have a bigger store in Dollar General, so now there's a lot, starting to get more walk-in pedestrian traffic across fourteen. So that's a concern, um, and, uh, for us. And then we'd, uh, on Thursday, and then we also talked about fourteen bypass, too. And, uh, what's kind of in our favor somewhat on, on SDSU games on Saturdays is that we have weekend traffic and not weekday business traffic. So the traffic, they did a traffic count, and it shows that there's a lot less traffic on Saturday than there is during the week. So that helps with, a little bit with the events coming in and going out of there. Um, they're gonna put a temporary traffic light at Twenty-Second Avenue for now, just like they did at, uh, at the, uh, when they did the construction and so forth. Then also, uh, the last fatado, fatado, fatality accident we had at the railroad track, um, the one that's just west of Brookings when, uh, from the cement plants and so forth, I had asked, I had asked the, uh, DOT to look at that for putting yellow lights out, but at that particular time, I got a nice letter back saying that, that just, that they were looking at it, but they were also looking at something over by the summit area or whatever. Well, the long story short is that there is going to be a flashing yellow light there, so that is coming. So I think that, uh, it seems like they want to move railroad cars when it's foggy, which, you know, they, I wish they'd not do that, but, because it's not like it's scheduled. I understand that the regular train is scheduled, but, you know, they move cars just when they have empty cars and, and so forth. But there are gonna, there are scheduled for yellow lights to show that there's a, a train, that that light's gonna, is flashing, uh, red. So, you know, I think that could, could help us. Otherwise, uh, it was a good meeting. I did send two staff people. I was in, uh, Pierre on Thursday, so I did send two staff people to the meeting here on, on Thursday. And on Thursday, Bart and myself attended the, um, uh, E-Care, uh, meeting, and, uh, you know, it was a good meeting, but I still didn't, we didn't come back with a lot of knowledge yet. So I can't give you guys a lot of knowledge yet on how this is, is going to work. There's just a lot of ifs yet, you know, about who's gonna pay and equipment and how this is gonna work. So it was, it was a good meeting. You know, we talked about, uh, jail statistics from the four jails that, uh, are participating and, and so forth, so, um, I look forward to the future. And there's things we gotta work out, because eventually there's gonna be a cost to this. After, if, if, if we go, if a lot of departments decide to go with E-Care, but we talked about pooling, too, pooling our money. In other words, you know, uh, all, all the counties that want to have E-Care, you know, we pool, you know, to pay for that. But I also brought up the fact that we give East Central Behavioral Health what a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We don't want to step on their toes either, you know, so they're gonna work with East Central Behavioral Health, too, and make sure that we're all, all kind of on the same page. But as we get more into this, you know, I'm anxious. I wanted to know the mechanics of it Thursday, you know, how is this gonna work? And we really didn't get into, to all that. So, anyway, we kind of got off topic a little bit, talking about problems that we see with mental health and, and, and so forth. One of the goals that we do want to have is that have us, uh, that we have a statewide, uh, intake procedure on the questions we ask at the jail. And there's, I think there's about ten counties that participated in a pilot with this, and there was a psychiatrist there, and, uh, he had saw those questions, and so he, we're, you know, they're gonna send him the questions, too, and, and, and see, uh, he was, what he did know about it, he thought that they were good questions, and they were questions that would seek out if a person needs, you know, further evaluation and so forth. So I apologize for not giving you more information, but, uh, it was kind of limited on the mechanics and what it's gonna cost and so forth. So there is gonna be a mental health summit in August, the middle of August. I don't know if you commissioners and, uh, if the state's attorneys at work, because they want, if, they want commissioners there and they want state's attorneys there, so, yeah, and that's good if you guys are there, because you guys have got the money. So it's gonna cost us money, whatever. So, anyway, so Bart and myself will attend that also. I guess that's it, unless you guys have. Uh, the Hamlin County incident is that my department really didn't get involved in it until later in the day. Um, Hamlin County basically handled it. You know, it was five hundred gallons of, of, uh, and maybe Bob has the exact, but five hundred gallons of, or nine hundred gallons of roundup and extended, and then four hundred gallons of, uh, diesel fuel. But they didn't know how much went, actually went into the river, but they did have a containment, uh, to try to contain that to go, any more going in. But later in that evening, then Pierre called dispatch and wanted my office to notify, uh, landowners within a three-mile radius of the river and tell them not to have their cows drink the water, in which we did as best we could in notifying people, uh, that night. But, uh, I don't know if there was a danger or not, but I think they're just was trying to be cautious and so forth. So that's about the only involvement that, that my office had. I did call that sheriff over there to see if he needed anything. I did send a deputy up there to check on him and see if they needed anything. But otherwise, Hamlin handled most of the accident. It was on their, their side of the borders, anyway. Other than that, uh, we've been kept busy. Seems like we've had a few accidents, couple fatalities, uh, in the last couple of weeks, so it's, it's, uh, uh, yeah, I don't know, you know, you worry, you know, but once you get past winter, you think we're not gonna have, uh, interstate accidents, but last week there was a four-car accident on the interstate right across from the, uh, Three M Bridge. It was a four-car accident. One car going slow. They come up over the hill and rear-ended, and then a just chain reaction, so, but nobody was injured, uh, too bad out of that. So, anyway, do you have any questions?
Any questions for the sheriff?
Yeah. Um, I went to the, the Highway Fourteen one at, like, what, three o'clock, which was a stakeholder one, and I hit him up right away about the Aurora Corner study.
Yeah, I got him.
And, uh, he said that's about, we're about the fifth person that has come up to him to ask about that. So I think we got our point across about, about that area. I, I don't think they committed to say we're gonna extend it there, but they said they think they're gonna do a study on that corner for us to see. So, because, and that, the stakeholder meeting I was at was from the interstate west, and so there was, that's the bypassed area there where Twenty-Second hits, and that's where there's a couple homeowners in that area saying you have to put lights back up, because it was the best. When we had that as the detour and they had lights there, said it was the safest that intersection had ever been.
Yeah.
And so now they're putting that temporary, and I think they're gonna put final, in a couple of years, they're gonna put permanent. But they have the same issues there as they do at the Aurora.
Aurora Corner, absolutely, yeah.
Where they're coming in and they're turning, and they're blocking the traffic, and they're coming through. They're at fifty-five miles an hour, um, and not seeing people. And, and, but I don't think they have as many semis turning as they do at that Aurora Corner. So I think it's probably even a bigger issue there with those semis blocking, turning towards the, the Navida and Valero over there. So hopefully they will, uh, you know, give us a recommendation on that, too, and maybe lights will be an option.
And I'm glad you mentioned something, too, coming from the commission, because we brought it up, uh, on Wednesday, too. And of course, they're, they're quickly to say, well, we didn't, we weren't going that far. That's gonna have to be a separate. But on Wednesday, we talked about eighty-one all the way to Twenty-Second Avenue or just across the bridge. We covered the whole, kind of the whole gamut, and then Thursday was more the, the bypass, so.
Bypass, yeah.
And, and, uh, we, we have the same concern. You have a lot of, you know, the events, you know, um, you know, for, uh, uh, football and so forth, you know. And of course, we're concerned about those roads coming off, you know, because it is a little chaotic when, uh, it's over and stuff, because everybody's impatient. I mean, they cut across from Twenty-Second Avenue, they'll act, or excuse me, they'll, they'll cut across from, uh, by the, by the football diamond, uh, diamond, football field, and actually go across the field and go, go down SDS field to come out of the ditch up onto Twenty-Second Avenue. And it's, it, it's, yeah, so, you know, a lot of times, I know they would like us maybe to get out and do traffic control. To be honest with you, sometimes when we get out and do traffic, physical traffic control, we sometimes jam, jam them up, too. I mean, they tried to do the best they can to get them going different directions from, from the football, but a lot of times, they'll go a direction, and pretty soon then they veer off, and that's when they go across the fields. And they actually are going across the fields and coming up the ditch, so. It's, it, it makes it interesting on, on game day. But we will have the capabilities of running that traffic light, too, by, by hand. So we can, that, that, that may help, too, to, to get traffic going and so forth. And one thing it is, is that the Highway Patrol has realized that, and I may have brought this up before, but they've realized that this is starting to be a big deal. In other words, it's a big event. So now they have, make sure there's Highway Patrol here. And actually, two patrolmen are out on the bypass. And actually, they're on overtime, too, and, and, uh, get paid by the athletic department to be out on overtime and so forth. And then they do assign, uh, Highway Patrol off, uh, to, I don't know if you noticed, last year they did have a Highway Patrol officer with, by the team also now, so, anyway. It took them a little longer. We knew it was a big, a big deal, you know.
Marty, going back to the mental health piece, I know there's been a discussion about, um, Avera Behavioral Health in Sioux Falls wanting to, um, well, as of now, HSC is the one where involuntary committals are processed by the county. Um, could you just talk to the county commission about some of those discussions that we've had regarding whether or not Avera Behavioral Health would be willing to accept our involuntary committals and part of the cost difference that might be there? Um, as I understand it now, the reason we don't use Avera Behavioral Health is because they're unwilling to accept people in custody when criminal charges are pending. But it might be a discussion that should be had concerning those that aren't in custody, that are still being involuntarily committed. Could you just talk to the commission about some of those dynamics?
Sure. And actually, you kind of summed it up for me already. Is that, actually, uh, Sunday night, we took a, um, a non, a non-arrestee to Avera that HSC, uh, Yankton said, yeah, go ahead and, and go to Avera. So that is a possibility. It's, it's that, uh, Avera at this point doesn't want to take individuals that are in custody, that are under arrest and so forth. But, uh, there are some talks about being able to go to Avera, but I don't know what the cost difference is, because I'm not sure what it does actually cost us at, I think it's twelve hundred dollars for intake at Yankton. I'm not sure of the cost. So that's one of the things, is, is Avera gonna cost more to take someone there? The problem at Yankton is, is that, is that they got the room, but they just don't have the staff. And so it'd be a lot easier for us if we could go to Avera, because it'd be closer also. So a big factor's gonna be, is it gonna be, you know, if they, if they just take our, our, uh, non-custodial arrest people, that's, that's a bargain also, too. I mean, if we can go there and stuff. So the, the thing is, it's kind of, I can't give you a lot of information, because it's a cost thing yet, you know. Is it, what is, what is it gonna cost at Avera versus, versus Yankton and so forth? But that's basically is that, and of course, what we're all trying to talk about with this E-Care and all this stuff is try to get them before we even have to go to a facility at all, you know, to, or it makes sure that, not so much of that, as, as, so they don't have to come to jail, and then we can get them to, to, you know, maybe Avera or, or Yankton. So, I mean, the, the talk is there, and they are willing to take our non, because, but I don't know what the cost difference is, because I don't get the bills. The bills actually go right straight to, uh, downstairs. So I don't know what the, if, if Avera's costing us anymore now or not.
It used to be a huge difference in costs between Avera and, and, between Sioux Falls and Yankton. It was a, just a huge difference, and I'm gonna be surprised if that's changed. I think we have to be careful when we look at making that change and using the Avera facility more than HSC, because we want that program in Yankton to get better. And in order to do that, they have to keep providing services. And the difference in the mileage, and I know the mileage is a problem for your office, but we do need to look at all the costs that are associated with that. Do you look at, when you make a decision on where you're taking somebody, whether or not they have any insurance it's gonna cover?
Yes, yes.
So that may make a difference, but...
Most of, well, I shouldn't say, the ones that are in custody, most of them don't have insurance.
Right.
But there are some that, that do, that, that aren't in custody and so forth. So we do look at that, at, at aspect. So I don't know if that helps, Dan. You, you actually did a better job than I did explaining, you know. It's, the main thing is cost, you know, what is it gonna cost? Uh, will they take ones that are in custody at some, at some point, so?
Is that something Stacy, that you could come back and tell us the difference in cost, get that information from the finance office? Because that's something we probably need to have a better handle on.
They go right to, Jenny takes care of them. She's never said anything to me. What, what I watch for is if the person is out of county. Um, you know, if, if they're, they live in another county or another state, then I alert Jenny so that they bill that, because then that county's responsible for, for that person. So we try to get our money back, but...
And things may very well have changed in the last six years, but before that, Avera was our, you know, our last resort because of the cost, so.
Anything else?
Any other comments or questions? Well, I think you got your homework. You need to figure out those costs and come back with some further.
And then maybe at, at the summit, maybe some of that'll come out at, in Chamberlain.
Where's the summit at? Chamberlain?
Chamberlain, yeah.
And the date on that?
Thirteenth and fourteenth.
Of this month?
Of August.
August, okay. All right, Vicki?
Good morning. Letting you know that, um, the sheriff's office had the distress warrant mobile home sale last Wednesday on the twenty-sixth. There was eleven mobile homes that were on the sale, and six of them sold. The other five that are left are basically unlivable. Nobody was living in any of the eleven, but the five that are left, um, I went along with Scott to the sale, and it's just kind of horrendous what, what they were. Um, some of them had been down at Southbrook in the flood, and, um, I'm sure that they will probably be returned as uncollectible, but we haven't got those back yet. When we get those back, I will bring that to the commission. Um, the total that we received for the six that were sold was twenty-five-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars and thirty-five cents. And that includes the taxes from last year, this year, and also a ten-dollar fee to get the title in their name. So that, and plus the advertising fees for the sheriff's office to advertise for the sale. So we were happy to get those, those sold, and thanks to the sheriff's office for doing that. We started out with a hundred and fifteen and got down to eleven. So, and we'll give you a report when we get the other five decided what is gonna happen with those. And, um, Kristen and I met with two of the members from the, um, potential road district, Bortonham Beach Road District that you passed last commission meeting. And we just set up, they are going to have the election July thirtieth, and we just went over the different parameters of the election and what they have to do out there for, um, getting everything set up. And then also yesterday afternoon, um, Heidi Gullickson from United Way stopped in, and she said that the Department of Social Services is now, um, involved in the helpline, the two-one-one helpline. And we have gave, the commission, or Brookings County, has gave twenty-five-hundred, um, two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. And the state is involved also with this, and they are giving, um, three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars across the state for matching of this. And it's through the United Way, um, Department of Social Services and the state. And what Heidi was wondering is if we could, if the commission could do a letter of, um, intent to say that they are going to try to fund at that level. They aren't asking for any more money, but they are wanting, um, to know that the commission is supporting this and would be continuing somewhere around that twenty-five-hundred-dollar level each year. Because the way it's set up now, Brookings County is, um, looking, they are looking for fifteen-thousand-nine-ninety-three-fifty from Brookings County as a whole. So the county portion would be twenty-five-hundred, and I don't know if they have any other people that they get money for, but otherwise, United Way would cover the rest of it. But, um, in the new application process, they just want something from the commission saying that they're gon, going to continue with this. So is that something that you want to do? If it is, we'll draw up something that can be signed at the next meeting to give Heidi and also the two-one-one, so they know that there's support within the county for this.
I guess my first thought is we, it's a pretty difficult to oblige future.
Right. And I did tell her that.
Commissions, but I think we could certainly say we have a history of, of, of twenty-five-hundred dollars, and it's in our budget for 2020, and it...
Yeah.
While we can't commit to a future, certainly our intent to support two-on-one. That'd be adequate?
Have we seen any statistics on the calls and stuff? I'm, I'm trying to remember if we, we've gotten any kind of report back. I'd like to know what's going on with two-one-one myself, but I, and I don't think- I'd like to know what's going on with 211 myself, but, and I don't think we've, we've had any information come in. They must do a report to United Way. It'd be nice if they could share that with us.
Yeah, that is something we could maybe reach out to Heidi on.
Yeah, I don't recall offhand if it was part of their non-mandated request. For some reason, I think that they have presented some numbers on calls somewhere. I think I've seen them, but I don't recall right off the top of my head where we were.
Where we saw that data was during the task force for mental health, when they were talking about 211 and put that program together to finance it. We got data at that particular point, if I recall. I just can't tell you what the numbers were, but I know we got data.
I'm sure Heidi has that information. We can sure reach out to her and maybe even have her come and give a presentation here to the board on, on what's going on.
But I don't have a problem signing a letter stating that our intentions are to continue it, but obviously, we can't obligate future commissions.
Sure, sure.
Vicki and I can work on something.
Yep, sounds good.
All right. Any other questions? Are you done?
Yep, I'm done.
You're finished? Come and ask for money, and then she's done. No, actually, you didn't ask for money. Thank you, Vicki. Misty, you're next.
Nine o'clock.
Was it nine o'clock? Okay. We have a nine o'clock scheduled item, item A, public hearing in action to approve a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license to Chade Vineyards Incorporated. And is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
Motion been made and seconded. At this point, I'll open the public hearing for testimony. Is there anybody here who would like to testify? Please come on up and just have a seat and identify yourself. It's on.
It's on. Perfect. Dylan, I'm Dylan Ringling, owner of Chade Vineyard Winery. Not everybody likes wine, so we'd like to serve beer. That's about all I got to say.
Any questions for the applicant? Anybody else would like to testify? See, nobody else here that wants to testify, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for comments from the question, from the commissioners. Questions or comments?
I actually do have a question, I'm sorry. So will the hours out there change? Will it be operated like a bar, or what, what's the intent?
No, we're not trying to be a bar. Just same 10 to 6, 6 days a week, so.
And any other questions or comments? Hearing done, we have a motion to approve. It's a voice vote, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Good luck. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do have one question, I'm sorry. Is this, and I'm in favor of this, it doesn't change my vote, but is this one of the, where we do the population count for the county, or is that for hard liquor where it makes a difference?
That's specific for liquor licenses, yeah. We can give as many of these as the commission, that if people apply and the commission approves.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now we'll go back to Misty.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't have much today. I come to ask you commissioners for your blessing to possibly okay some overtime. We're halfway done with our county roads. We've got four townships left. The DOT is done, we're done spraying on that. With the weather we've had, wind, rain, we'll go out and it'll blow us out, so then we go out and pick up chopped thistles. I visited with Stacy yesterday morning. We, we have some wiggle room in our budget. We have the weed enforcement officer we had budgeted for. We have a total of $14,800 in that line for salaries. So if we were to work overtime, we could utilize that, that amount. I'm thinking we may need it as long as we get some good spray days, you know. It's the only other thing I could do besides. I don't, we're not, we're not going to spray on Sundays. Please don't think that. We're taking Sundays off. We don't, we've never sprayed on Sundays, we're not going to, but possibly a Saturday morning if we can spray. I'd like to spray Saturday morning and then plan on working until at least five during the weeks.
And then if, in days during the week, the wind's not blowing, you'd be able to continue spraying after your eight hour.
Correct. But I just wanted to run that by you in case we did go over or have to look at paying our guys overtime.
Any questions or comments to that issue?
No.
I have no problem with that as long as you're in your budget.
Yeah, I don't either.
Usually, we're about done spraying by now, but everybody knows our weather's been crazy. I have one more thing. I will be gone on vacation. Tomorrow morning I leave, and I will be back next Tuesday. Gary Eggerberg will be running the weed department for me. So if there's any problems or anything, we've got it, you've got his number, he'll take care of things for us. Any other questions?
If not, thank you, Misty.
Thank you.
Have a good vacation. Mr. Hill?
On June 20th, we had a special planning zoning meeting. We heard two different topics. Meeting went well. June 22nd, on a Saturday, the Amateur Radio Relay League had their annual field day at the Brookings Gun Club. We put our emergency operations center on the ground on Friday. We picked it back up on Monday. It went well. June 24 to 26, last week, I was in Washington, attending the gas pipeline advisory committee. We finally passed our rules that we've been working on. On a sad note, on June 24th, 2019, our planning commission chairperson, Robert Rochelle from Elkton, South Dakota, passed away. It is easy to overlook the members of various boards that we have in the county, but Mr. Rochelle had served on the planning commission since 1996. Our condolences go out to his family and friends. It is people like him that has helped shape Brookings County into what it is today through our planning and zoning programs. He also served on the Brookings County Conservation Service Board for several years, from 1987 to 2014. And tonight, we'll have a moment of silence at the start of our planning and zoning meeting in his honor. June 25th to 27th, 2000, Richard attended a FEMA flood modeling, modeling class in Pierre. We've got some new flood maps fixing to come out in this class, just to reinforce some of the background into making those new maps. June 27th, I attended a city of Brookings Airport Emergency Plan Meeting with the airport manager and the police department and the fire department. We're working on our third quarter state and local agreement documentation for the state of South Dakota. On July 11th, next week, at 3:00 PM in this room, we have a FEMA applicant briefing for all towns, townships, county, highway, and county EM offices. Be in the chambers. This meeting's going to be mandatory for organizations that apply for funding. And like our, our county highway did not apply for the, the road funding because there's a different program for that, but where, where we're gonna, where our application is, is for overtime and the snow removal cost during the blizzard. Because this, the majority of the funding's going to be for the road, township road type damage. But then they also came back, we fell within a certain window where local towns, communities, and the county could get reimbursed on similar snow removal costs. So that's where the county got involved. We'll get, the goal was obviously to get as much money as we could back to the county.
What, what time was that again, Bob?
Starts at 3:00 PM. And that's July 11th. I'll have my staff here available, and we'll stay until the FEMA, FEMA portion's over. We sent packets out to all the townships and the communities to fill out the paperwork ahead of time. I encourage, if you get frustrated not, in not being able to fill out all the paperwork, bring the paperwork with you, and FEMA will be here and we'll make sure we sit down and help you and get everything done that, that day. That's what they're here for, and we'll, we'll stay until it's all done. There is ICS, incident command system training at SDSU, July 8 to 9 for ICS 300, July 22 to 23 for ICS 400. Drainage issues. The last, at the last commission meeting, I talked to you about south of town and some, some individuals are getting together and trying to make some kind of plan on what we could discuss. If we have a discussion with the city on drainage, and they're going to come back to me with that at a later time. And we also filled in some phone calls on South Dakota Highway 81, US Highway 81, I guess it is, over by south of Arlington, covering the road. So just to let you know, chatter's starting out there on that one. The Hazmat Incident in Hamlin County, we did have to come in and, and we worked with the commission department and got the GIS technician in. And our job was to identify downstream landowners within three miles of the county line on a Big Sioux River. Matter of fact, Richard just stopped by. The flood level wasn't eight foot, it's going to jump three feet, such as the highway superintendent mentioned. The Big Sioux River's predicted to jump three feet between now and a day or two because of all the recent rain. So he's up there right now seeing if we can find any cattle three miles from the Big Sioux River. And so we're going to run down the landowners and recommend they get, keep their cattle away. So it was a Hamlin County incident, we was in touch with Hamlin County, and we're working on Hamlin County the best we can. EPA has been in contact with us and Department of Ag at the federal level called me the day after the event. And Environmental Protection Agency's up there, and Department of Environment and Natural Resources from South Dakota's been in contact with us. And another thing that, when we notified all those landowners and, and kudos to the sheriff's department, because we, we came in, my staff and, and commissioner's staff came in, we got the names, and then we relayed the names to the sheriff's office and the deputy, assisted us in contacting who they could. And AD Farms called me the day after wanting to know what was up, and I said, well, they was talking about livestock. And then they mentioned that their bees also drink from the same, same water source, so they appreciated the contact, too. But with the flooding coming, I guess the base of this story with, with the trains we just had, the river's going to come up and could keep spreading contamination. And last but not least, on Monday, July 8th, I am trying to get a meeting together, this isn't fixed in stone yet, I'm trying to get a meeting put together for 6:00 PM over at the police station. Want to have a meeting with all the local fire department chiefs, fire chiefs, and we're gonna, it's going to be, new communications that we're setting up with the new repeaters, it's going to require some radios to be reprogrammed. And I also want to do a local emergency operations plan review at the same time, kill two birds off one stone at one meeting. And I'll send the commission a personal invitation. If, if everything falls together and we have a meeting scheduled for July 8th, I'll go ahead and send, send invitations out, we'll go ahead and make, put the meeting on our meeting schedule. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Was it July 8th, Bob?
July 8th is what I'm going to shoot for.
Do you have a time?
It'd be 6 o'clock if it happens.
Any other questions for?
Will that include, like, the ambulance crews, too?
All means. All the fire chiefs and the ambulance from Elkton and White and Brookings, obviously.
It is meeting night for some of them, so.
They'll be welcome to bring whoever they want.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Jacob? Good morning.
Couple things for you today. Yesterday, Department of Revenue emailed in our new productivity numbers for our top dollars to be passed on to productivity. It looks like the crop top dollar for Brookings County is actually going to go down about one and a half percent for 2019. If you had a perfect acre of crop soil in Brookings County, it was worth $2,463.81 on the assessment. That's going to be going down for 2020's assessment to $2,427.42. And then for the pasture, non-crop, for 2019's assessment, we were at $629.21. That's going to increase by 3.1% to $648.80. And that compares statewide to, looks like the total inventory of crop soil statewide went down about six tenths of a percent. And for the non-crop, increase of 5%. The other thing pertains to item G on regular business, and it's a, it's a contract between Brookings County and Schneider, which is Beacon. And what we're trying to do is put a link out on the search page for anybody who's a subscriber currently to Beacon to view our PT or certificate of value for all of our real estate transactions. And what our office wants to do is have those linked by month, so we'll have all the PTs available per month, starting, I think we can start in August. And there is a fee for that. They're going to prorate the rest of this year, August through December, at $250 total. And then if we continue to do this every year, it's, there's a $600 fee. And we've had requests from a few subscribers, mainly private appraisers for this, they can get everything they need from their Beacon subscription, with the exception of viewing these certificate of value forms, so they come into our office and dig through our files for those, which is cumbersome for, for them and for us. So it alleviates some, some headache, I guess, within our office. Any questions?
Questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Just on item G, and I know we're not on that right now, but since you brought it up. The agreement makes reference to that terms of service document that wasn't included in our packet, but is incorporated in this agreement. Have you reviewed that terms of service agreement?
The only document I've seen is the two-page service agreement to be signed at the bottom.
Did the state's attorney's office review the, the document that's incorporated in this agreement by reference?
I haven't.
Okay, thanks.
And we'll discuss that again later. Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you much, Jacob. Move on to regular business here. Item A is the first reading of an ordinance number 2019-01, an ordinance establishing a 35 mile an hour per hour speed limit upon a portion of Brookings County Road 5, also known as 464th Avenue. Be it ordained by Brookings County, South Dakota, whereas pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law 32-25-9.1, the Board of County Commissioners may determine and establish speed zones upon all and any part of the highways under its jurisdiction. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners has received a request to reduce the speed on a portion of Brookings County Road 5, known as 464th Avenue, due to the amount of traffic entering and exiting the roadway, as well as its proximity to the city of Volga, South Dakota, and it appears necessary to reduce the speed limit on a portion of County, Brookings County Road 5, 464th Avenue, to provide for the safety and welfare of all residents and travelers on such road. Therefore, be it ordained that a speed limit of 35 miles per hour be and the same is hereby established on that portion of Brookings County Road 5, 464th Avenue, commencing at 1,340 feet north of the city limits of the city of Volga and continuing south to the city limits of the city of Volga, or 1,310 feet north of US Highway 14 on County Road 5, 464th Avenue in Brookings County, South Dakota. And again, this is the first reading. Second reading will be on Tuesday, July 23rd of 2019.
Can I interject one thing?
You certainly may.
As part of Back to Department Head Reports, Sonia Mack, our 4-H Youth Program Advisor, provided a staff report that I handed out this morning. She sent it to me kind of at the end of last week. I think I had emailed it out to you for you to review prior, but the hard copy was there just as a kind of note to put that on the record as well.
Duly noted. Item B is an action to approve resolution number 19-19, a resolution authorizing the purchase of construction equipment from the state of South Dakota, contract 17286. Bid process, is there a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments? Any comments, Brian, that you need to make on this one? None? Any comments from the commissioners? Any comments from the Commissioners? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Krogman?
Hi.
Jensen?
Hi.
Pierce?
Hi.
Orsma?
Hi.
Bartley?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item C is an action to approve Agreement Number 19-38, a state of South Dakota Department of Transportation funding agreement, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any comments or questions?
This funding, uh, was made available because of the, uh, sheer amount of bridges that we have in poor condition. Um, I've also reached out to some other counties, um, we're, we're getting a pretty good chunk of what the state had to offer here, so. And the Bruce Bridge, or the bridge north of Bruce is, is on this list. Uh, if you look farther down the list, it is on there, so keep that in mind also.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Commissioner Pierce.
I just had a, a question about that Exhibit B that was attached, that memorandum from the, um, the load rating of specialized hauling vehicles, does that apply to us? Because it looked like in some places it only applied to federal lands, in some places it applied to everything.
Well, farther down the list, I know that was like a, a, it was a pack of like 31 documents. And a lot of it had to be to deal with, um, how the engineer rated those bridges. I know, when I, when I looked at that, and it seems like as they keep, uh, changing on how they rate these bridges, they're adding in these new special haulage vehicles, and that's what that's kind of covering.
So it does apply to us even though we're not federal lands?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
So, what, we're getting more money, right? From the state?
1.1660859, yeah, a million, uh, 166,608.59.
Okay, cool, so, um, do we, what do we have to do with this money, is there a certain?
We have to allocate this money to be spent within three years.
And, and obviously this is different than our, um, rehabilitation and big grant that we have and all that kind of stuff?
Yes.
Yeah, gotcha, okay, so, how, we're going to?
We have to have a project that's ready to be built, similar to what we have done with that structure north of Bruce.
Okay.
If we were to start the process and not having all that engineering done currently, we would, we would not be able to complete that prog, process in time.
Okay.
So since we have one on the shelf, that's ready to go, we can allocate this money to that project.
And that would not count against us on the big grant, is that right?
Right. It would, we could, essentially this is separate from the big grant.
Right.
But it, it'd still go towards that. You know, we wouldn't be able to go over a $4 million cap.
With this dollar amount, we still wouldn't be able to, because we have some money coming up next year that we were looking at, some other ones that make an application.
Yeah, now as these projects start falling off that we did in their, you know, past.
Right.
We can use this money to match those funds.
Yeah.
So, with, with the big funds.
Okay.
So the way we have it set up right now in the five-year plan, I believe, is that if we leave it set as current, we would be able to use these funds to pay our portion.
Okay.
And I did verify that with, with the engineers and the state.
Other questions?
Can you put up a five-year plan for a minute on the board? I just, I have a question then, but I'd have to see the list, so what you're suggesting is we use it on the bridge north of Bruce, or are you saying spread it out amongst?
We, we can determine however we want to use this money on any of the structures that are on this, this list. You know, we can determine however we want to use that money. I know Stacy's pulling that up, but there's, uh, close to 20 structures on this list that we can choose to use this money on, but it does have to be on this list of structures to be utilized. We can't just go and pick another random structure, it has to be on this list.
And, and we would use those funds, it's basically unrestricted funds, we don't have to come up with a match or anything like that for the, for that million dollars they're allocating. What's, what's the approximate cost of that bridge of, north of Bruce?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but it was two and a half million.
Two and a half million?
Yeah.
Right, and so, if we use this 1 million towards that, we'd start coming up with 1.5 to finish that if it wasn't put through the big program, correct?
But since it's on the program currently, they would still match that other, or, or, you know, I have it set up right now is that the state would match the 50%, or we would match the, you know, 50/50, you know, which I believe it was 1.2, so we'd have to come up with another
200,000.
Or 100,000.
This can be used towards our match.
Yeah, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Good deal.
Very good deal.
Any other questions or comments?
So, when, when those, when those funds come in, I, and I just, until we see the plan, I can't, I can't remember, but what do we have, do you know, that's already, that we've done preliminary engineering on, or?
Yeah, preliminary engineering, uh, basically a shovel-ready project. If you were to start the engineering now, your time would lapse, but, you know, by the time you'd be eligible to get that funding.
So it has to be, it has to be, um, projects that we've already got our preliminary engineering done on in order to, to make it qualify.
Right.
Is, is the Bruce Bridge the only one that we have that done, or is there any more that we've got?
We're, if, if you take a look at my five-year plan, I, I don't foresee this going to be the last time that the federal government may, may come up with this program, if you look at our five-year plan, I'm going to be fairly aggressive on getting these projects ready, as you can see, I have eight, uh, added into that. In anticipation that this may happen again. Now, if it doesn't happen again, we still have those projects on the shelf, I did find out, there is no shelf life on a preliminary engineering grant, the only thing you may have to redo is, uh, the hydraulics.
So the Sinai Bridge, can we use any of that money for the Sinai Bridge?
If you would, if, uh, if it's on the list, uh, as of 2017, we could, I'd have to check, Leanne, but if, if it's on this list of structures that are listed in poor condition, we could also do that. Which I'm assuming this was on the list because of the, due to the 6 ton rating.
Because I think, and the rest of you can tell me if you agree, that the Sinai Bridge is a priority for us to get it done.
Which has already been
We've already budgeted.
Awarded.
Yep.
Yeah, it's budgeted and awarded, that bridge has been.
I mean, also this bridge north of Bruce, it's important too, it's the only rated bridge on that stretch of road. We've completed two to the north, now we got one left. To complete that row.
Like I said, as, as our federal governments, I, I, I know taking more notice as meetings that I've been to is, I, there's no promise it's going to happen, but, uh, it doesn't hurt to have these preliminary engineering grants on the shelf, or these preliminary engineering studies done, so when a pro, when funding does come available like this, we're not scrambling to try to find a spot to spend it.
I, I think the important part is, is if they expire, you know?
And they do not, I did, I did find out.
That's what I didn't realize. That's good.
So.
That's really exciting.
Yeah.
I don't see a lot of trouble spending it within three years.
No, I, I think with, uh, the aggressive five-year plan we have currently sitting in front of you, I, I don't foresee us having any issue.
I'm curious on how we will do the bookkeeping. Because, you know, we just kind of got our, our format, where we're assigning the funds from the big program and setting that up, do we need to, how does this play into the system so we're tracking this?
When's, is it, when's the funds going to make it to us, are they going to make it this year?
I think it's going to be on a reimbursement, similar to the big.
It's going to be on a reimbursement schedule.
So, um.
Once we would get the project completed, we get reimbursed.
But where we've assigned a certain amount of money to a project already, and now we think we will use these funds for that, we can unassign those funds and use them for something else.
Yes, yeah, we would, if, if you determine, if the board determines what you want to use these dollars for, um, then we could unassign funds if we've already assigned funds for a project that you want to use these funds for. Um, otherwise, I would say, assign these funds to a project that hasn't, um, had any assignments for it yet, anticipating that this is what we'll use to pay for that, for example, I don't think we've set any money aside for the Bruce Bridge. So if that's the intent, um, we could take that dollar amount and set that, set that aside, assign that.
Okay, any other questions?
One last one, when do you intend on coming back and making a recommendation as to which projects we use these funds for? Is this something we'll do this year, or what, what are you thinking?
I would like to have it, you know, figured out soon in the five-year plan, I, I would assume that the state's going to want to know where that funding is going to be spent. So it will be included in the five-year plan.
Can I interject a caveat to what I just said? If we're going to assign funds, we have to have the cash to assign, so I know as we do that, if, you know, this is, this is not cash that we have.
Oh, right.
So, we have to make sure that the cash and the fund balance of the highway department allows us to assign those funds without putting us in sort of dire straits on that, but, but that's going to have to all be looked at once we make some decisions. And I think it'll be Brian and Vicki and I sitting down and, and bringing a recommendation on how, what to do back to the board, so.
Have we made the application for the Bruce Bridge to the big grant yet?
No, that would be January 1, or we can submit by January 1 for that structure.
And then so, last time we sat down and looked at the point system and how much we were willing to match and different stuff, are you just kind of assuming we're going 50/50 with it again, or?
Well, that's why I, that's the way I put it in the five-year plan, but that's still open to discussion because it's just, it's not finalized yet.
This plan in front of you is not finalized.
Right.
We have to go through the public hearing process, but this is, um, the preliminary five-year plan that Brian presented as part of his budget. So.
No, I understand, I just, yeah, I didn't know, because, I mean, we changed our application a couple, each year we change our application to be more aggressive, and so I don't think it's a bad idea to sit down before those applications go out again, and
And that's why I wanted to get the five-year plan ahead, way to you guys ahead of time, so we, if, I didn't expect this to come up, but it's a good surprise.
Yeah, exactly.
So this 1.1 million, that only can be used for bridges, it cannot be used for roads?
The way the, the agreement currently reads, yeah. Bridge, structure, replacement, rehabilitation, or preservation on those bridges identified in Exhibit A.
Any other questions? Ready to vote, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Orsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D is an action to approve Agreement Number 19-39, a state of South Dakota Department of Transportation, big, bridge improvement grant, I keep wanting to call it big, uh, for preservation, local administrations, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any comments or explanation, Brian?
Uh, this would be a preservation grant for the bridge just south of Bruce, over the Sioux River. Um, fairly similar to what we did on our three preservation grants this year. Uh, about the exact same thing, this one's just a little longer than the other three we did.
Any other questions?
Do we, we were planning on this?
Yes.
And, and we have the 20% for this one?
I believe it's all, it was in Dick's budget, yeah.
Gotcha.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Orsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item A is an action to approve Agreement Number 19-40, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Eureka Township, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any comments? Any comments, hearing none, we'll call, or all in favor say aye.
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 Pose na. Motion carries, item F is an action to approve Agreement Number 19-41, an application for the occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley G, Energy and Brookings Township, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose na. Motion carries, item G is an action to approve Agreement Number 19-42, a professional services agreement with Schneider Geospatial, is there not, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, motion been made and seconded, uh, any comments? Any additional questions for Jacob?
I just think it's a poor procedure for us to approve an agreement, I'm not necessarily opposed to this agreement, but to approve an agreement that adopts a whole nother contract that nobody's read. I, I don't think that's a good process for us to follow.
I believe the contract was just the two-page document, that it's straightforward, there's one item on it, and it says to provide a module to display COV link on Beacon search page.
What it, what it says, just a second, let me get back to the right spot, sorry. Is that we, we say that we agree that it incorporates this other document and that we have read that other document. It says that in the, in this agreement.
So item three, the link that's there.
Okay, I apologize, I haven't read that.
And I, are we under a time constraint, could we just table this till our next meeting and give?
Sean has some comments, he came out.
I believe there is a deadline at the bottom of the form, it says price good through, and it's the end of this month.
We have an, an existing agreement with Schneider Geospatial, Beacon, whatever you want to call them, um, where we've already agreed to this, so we're already subject to the Terms of Service under those agreements. We've had an agreement with them for how many, I, I don't know how many years, it predates my time.
At least 10 years.
So, it, if there is an issue, personally, I would think that it would have occurred by now. A person, and I personally haven't reviewed it, um, a quick glance at it on the, on their website indicates that it's fairly straightforward as far as their Terms of Service. And, and if we're holding off on this, we should, in my opinion, hold off on the rest of our agreements with them until we review that in that case.
Every time we see, sign a legal document, we should have read what it is that we're agreeing to, because those Terms of Service, there may be a new paragraph or a couple additional sentences, we just don't know, there may not be anything that's different, but we don't know, and we're saying here that we have read that agreement and understand that it's incorporated in here.
Any other questions or comments, so your suggestion is, is to defer this action until our next meeting? And that's still time to, to get this completed?
There's a date at the bottom of this application here, pricing is valid through July 24th, and the next meeting is?
The 23rd.
So, is this, this agreement referencing the agreement we already signed with them?
No, it's just, that's another document that they just make changes to when they want, I'm not saying that there's something nefarious there, they just have another agreement terms, they call it, that they put up on their website or in a, in a, in a legal document, that they change unilaterally, and that when we sign this agreement, we say we accept whatever the new agreement is. Well, and I'm, there's probably not any issue, but we haven't read that. We don't know what that new agreement says.
At this point, we do have time to sign it on the 23rd.
I would make a motion to table this until the 23rd.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Orsma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries.
Okay, we will put it on the next agenda, and who's going to review this? Dan?
I can.
Okay, thank you. All right, table. Item H, action to approve agreement number nineteen dash four-three, a Mini-Haw County Jail per diem contract, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments? Marty?
This is an annual agreement that we sign with Mini-Haw. They don't always, they don't always have room for, for inmates right now, but what sometimes happens is that if I have a Brookings resident that's on the 24/7 program, and they live in, in Sioux Falls, then we send them to that, that area to do their 24/7. What sometimes happens is they violate, and for instance, this winter now, we couldn't get to Sioux Falls to pick them up. So then they held them for the two-day, forty-eight-hour violation, and then, then I have to pay Mini-Haw. Normally, if, if we do have something, someone that violates, we try to go get them right away so we don't incur that cost, it's just transportation cost. But at times, we do have to use them, but right now, they're not accepting inmates from other counties. That makes sense.
Any other questions?
Just what is our contract rate on our contracts for people that, counties that send people to us?
Right now, it's at sixty-five. I intend to raise that. Cause it, it's probably gonna be around that ninety day, or ninety-dollar mark.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item I is an action to approve spending twenty-five thousand dollars out of the Fire Department Long-Term Fund by the Toronto Fire Department for a pumper truck. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments? I believe this was okayed by the fire chief who runs that fund?
Yes, um, this is that long-term fund that we, we give money, put money, budget for each year, and then anything that's left over at the end of the year that goes unspent rolls into kind of a long-term fund for the fire departments. And then that's administered by Daryl Hartman and his staff at the Brookings Fire Department. So they keep track of which individual department has a percentage of those funds. And so, um, this twenty-five thousand dollars would be some of the funds, or maybe all of the funds that the Toronto Fire Department has, so. But yes, Daryl has approved this, he signed off on the claim.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item J is an action to approve the low bid for the parking lot at the City and County Government Centre to Clark Drew Construction Incorporated, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments? No comments? All those will call the roll, I guess.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item K is an action to declare items as surplus property to sell via online auction or dispose of, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments?
Uh, we would like to, um, remove an item, the Rico MP thirty-five oh-one copier, this third one down. Remove that, we're going to actually hold on to that, we might be able to repurpose that for another use. That's the only change I have to the list.
Do we need to modify the motion to exclude that amendment? Are we fine with it? We're fine with it? Okay. As, as modified, then. Any other comments or questions? Not, I think that one was a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Motion carries. Then we get down to the Commission Director's report.
Included with my report is a draft of a survey that we would like to send out to all county employees. A lot of it has to deal with, do with benefits, but there are a few other questions in there. Again, this is just a draft, kind of looking for direction from the Commission. If there's any questions that you would like removed from that survey, or added to that survey, and then I would work with Laura to send this out so that employees can anonymously send back their answers to the survey. And then from there, present those to the board for you to do with as you see fit. Is there any concerns or questions, or is this not something you want to do?
I guess, I, I don't necessarily have a problem with us doing an employee survey. And I don't think we need to sit here and work through the form necessarily. But when you're looking at surveys and how things are worded, there's, you need to be, um, recognize the fact that how the questions asked can skew the answer. And I think we have some issues with how some of our questions are written, that's just my take on that. I would be willing, if the rest of the Commission wants the survey, to work with Stacy on, on, on the survey, but I, I just think we might wanna tweak how we ask some of our questions. And there might be some other questions to add in.
I mean, just some of the questions, like, are you, uh, are you enrolled in Delta Dental? And if you are, the next question is, how satisfied are you? Like, we probably have the numbers whether we have people enrolled or not, so the question should probably be if you're enrolled in Delta Dental. It's one question. The less questions you have, the more they're apt to answer the questions in the survey. So if it's, if you're enrolled in Delta Dental, have you had any difficulties, yes or no? Or what are the, so, just, you know, we know how many are enrolled in each of those plans. Don't have to ask them that. Just say, if enrolled. That takes out about four or five questions. Other than that, is there any interest in having Leanne go ahead and work with that, are you comfortable with that?
Sure.
Okay. That's what we'll do, then.
Okay. Joan Crooks reached out to me with the Conservation District about the annual Conservation District tour that we do each year. They're looking at doing something in August. They're also planning, and I don't know if they have a date set yet, but they're planning a pancake breakfast sometime in August to commemorate the district's seventy-fifth anniversary. So I think they were gonna maybe set that at their meeting tomorrow, I believe, set that date. And I don't think they necessarily wanted to coordinate the tour with that date because they might be busy, but I just wanted to let you know that we'll be kind of looking at dates if there's anything in August now that you know we should stay away from. I would appreciate knowing that, I guess, so as we try to, to schedule that, that tour. Um, the other thing, excuse me, the other tour in August too, that I want to do separately from this, because this takes up the better part of your day, is, um, you know, working with, with Brian and doing kind of our own county tour, looking at some of our projects and, and different things around the county as well. So, um, if you, instead of going through everybody's calendars now, if there are some dates in August that you know you cannot, that you have plans and cannot do something like this, because I think the Conservation District tour, as you know, it takes up the better part of a day, I think. I think we have, they usually do meet just before lunch, have a lunch, and then go out, and it's for, so it's, it's several hours. And then I would think that our county tour would take probably half a day too. So if there are some days on your calendar already that you know you cannot do that, just send those to me, and then I can work with Joan on getting some other dates set up, and, and we can discuss those as that. Hopefully have something set in July at our next meeting.
If, if I could throw out a suggestion, we have two Tuesdays in August where we don't have Commission meetings. Would those be days generally that, Tuesdays that would be available for everybody? Because maybe, at least our highway one, we could aim for a, a Tuesday.
Mornings work quite well for me on Tuesday.
Not the 27th for me.
Not, not the 27th.
August 13th is the other Tuesday.
Is that the 13th and the 14th, wasn't that that?
That was the mental health, um, summit in Chamberlain, yes.
All that took care of the Tuesdays.
Sounds like time for a doodle poll. You wanna put that together? Online poll, that's, that way we can fill it out.
And then also included with my report was your official invitation for the First District picnic coming up on July, Wednesday, July 17th. That is at six o'clock up at Memorial Park, on Lake Campeska, up near Watertown. I handed out this morning the Conservation District's meeting agenda for two, for tomorrow at eight fifteen at the NRCS conference room. Also, I handed out, um, the copy of the letter of support for the Twentieth Street interchange the Board had given consensus for Commissioner Pierce to draft that at the last meeting, and then have Commissioner Bartley sign that. So that was in front of you, and that will get turned into BEDC today. There's also some information that I handed out this morning on some upcoming STIP meetings. And then a little kind of last, some dates, obviously, July 4th, this Thursday, offices will be closed for the holiday. Safety Week will be conducted for all employees the week of July 15th through the 19th. That includes some drills here specifically for this building, but I'm, I'm hoping that some of the other buildings will hold their own drills as well. Um, and then the safety picnic that you are invited to, eleven-thirty to one-thirty on Thursday, July 18th, out at Pioneer Park. And I've already mentioned the First District picnic. And then, last but not least, I attended Sergeant Kuhn with the Brookings Police Department, put on active shooter trainings for, uh, for city and county staff over the last probably five, six weeks. And I attended one last week and had some really great takeaways from that. And I believe he, um, is going to be, they actually, he and another member of the Brookings Police Department walked through all of the offices and looked at just safety and security points. And I think they'll be bringing a recommendation back on some potential items that maybe could be changed, and things that maybe could be done to make offices safer. So, um, that, I believe, initially will probably come because with the, the potential for, um, for costs, maybe to the Joint Powers Board first, and then you may be seeing that at, at, at this level at some point. But, um, really appreciated those trainings and working with the city to get those done. So that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Stacy? Saying none, Dan, we'll have the State's Attorney's Office report.
Thank you. One of the issues that came up when I gave my presentation regarding the statistics from last year was the amount of juveniles who are referred to teen court. And, um, the, as I understand it, the history behind some of the funding that the county has given to the Boys and Girls Club was centered around the fact that teen court was run through the Boys and Girls Club. Um, and so the decision was made, I believe, to have the county give twenty-five thousand dollars a year to the club for the last, I believe it was three years. And after the presentation of some of the statistics showing that the number of juveniles being referred to the diversion program, which is teen court, uh, was down, I believe the Commission made the decision this year to reduce funding from the twenty-five thousand dollar number to fifteen thousand in response to some of the, uh, the decreasing numbers for those that were being referred to teen court out of the State's Attorney's Office. So in terms of full disclosure, I now serve on the board at the Boys and Girls Club. It's the Brookings Advisory Council, it's made up of around twenty individuals here within the city of Brookings that serve on, on that board. And obviously, we know the important work that the Boys and Girls Club does. And we know that they have a lot of great resources for young people over there in terms of giving them something to do outside of the home, keeps them out of trouble. Um, and so what I did was, in the last month, I went to Court Services, I have a meeting with the judge, and then I also went to the other Advisory Council members at the club and spoke with them about the possibility of referring more juveniles in, that are in the criminal justice system to the club, uh, for various programming that's available there. Uh, and so this would be the juveniles not only being referred to teen court, but also being referred to complete various club activities as part of their probationary sentence. Uh, so these are the juveniles that are remaining in our community on felony probation, delinquent children, um, and implementing the club activities into their probationary sentence to try and get more kids to go to the club, but also, um, having kids that, that are on felony probation, that maybe don't have a place to go, uh, and just trying to utilize our local resources here better. Uh, and so after my meetings with Court Services, UJS personnel, they're very open and receptive that I, to that idea, having the court order their attendance, uh, to the Boys and Girls Club to complete whether it's teen court or, uh, club activities. And so I don't have a plan necessarily detailing specifically what those activities would be at the club to present to the County Commission today. But what I did want to ask is that the County Commission reconsider the funding that's being allocated to the club back up to the twenty-five thousand dollar mark, um, before we finalize the budget for next year, and give me one more year to show the County Commission that we're fully utilizing the club, um, as best as we can. Because the, the biggest thing that they're dealing with is they have all of these resources, they have all of these programs that are available to teenagers here, uh, within the, the community, and it's just they're, they're struggling with getting teenagers to the club, right? And so that's kind of where I come in, is can we leverage what's happening in the, in the justice system to make them participate in the club? Because I, I don't think I have to tell any of the Commissioners what positive impacts the club can have on a, on a juvenile if they, if they regularly attend. And so what the club is willing to do is they're willing to waive the costs for those delinquent juveniles to attend the club. Not necessarily conditioned on the, on the county paying the twenty-five thousand, but that's one of the, the ways that they're willing to partner with the justice system in trying to get more kids to the club. And so, um, just with my conversations with Stacy, I think there is probably still time to submit a detailed plan to the County Commission before the budget's finalized to show the Commissioners exactly where the additional ten thousand dollars would be spent, um, at the club, and how it would further help, uh, our young people in the community to, to make sure that we're putting them on a path to succeed after they exit the, uh, the justice system. So just wanted to put that bug in the Commissioner's ear. And I just think it would be a step back for us to, to decrease funding to that important organization, especially when they're willing to step up and take on more delinquent children into the club. I just think that it wouldn't be smart for us to turn away from that. I think that's the direction that we need to go, is how can we allocate these existing resources in a way that helps these kids? Cause these kids are, they're staying here anyway, they're staying in the community, they're not being sent to the EOC on felony probation. They're staying here in the community, they're gonna have to stay in school, they're gonna have to complete local programming. And so why not have them go to the club as part of their probation? Um, and if they are going to do that, I think the county should be able to step up and commit that twenty-five thousand like we have in years past. So if the, if the Commission's receptive to that, and they're willing to consider that, um, I'm certainly willing to have one of the, uh, the people that would be in charge of the teen center where these juveniles would be going to come and present to the Commission. to the Commission, um, and certainly, I can have one of the Court Service Officers come over too, and just express their commitment to, to make this part of, uh, juvenile probation, so. Any questions? Yes?
So, uh, you said you were gonna be talking to the judge and stuff like that, would this, would this be something that the judge would hand down as part of the, there, and are they willing to do that, or is it more the judicial system will put together plans and say this is a recommendation we, you know, that we go with this? How does that work?
Yeah, it would be buy-in from the judges where they would make it part of the probation sentence that you complete programming, um, at the Boys and Girls Club, so whether that was teen court, because right now teen court is only being used for the kids that committed an offense, but they're not brought into court, so it's like a diversion, you complete teen court successfully, we won't bring you into court, but what I want to do is, those kids that are on felony probation, make them also complete teen court, or have them complete various activities at the club that would be specifically outlined in their probationary sentence, um, so these would be activities that the club currently has, that the kids would complete as part of their probationary sentence, and yes, to answer your question, it would be ordered in court that they do that, um, so.
Dan?
Yes?
Who would, who would be keeping the statistics so a year from now, we would know actually how, how those funds were used and how many kids that impacted? Would that be your office or the?
Yeah, it'd be our office that would keep that, I mean.
And somebody will do that?
Yeah, I mean, Amy Christensen, the current legal assistant that is in charge of the juvenile paralegal work, um, I could task her with keeping those statistics, so I could present then to the County Commission, okay, starting on, if we rolled it out next month or September, starting on September 1 of 2019, up until, you know, January of next year when I give my next address, these were the amount of kids that were on felony probation, were sent to felony probation, and as part of that sentence, they were referred to the club, um, so I would, I would have that number, and then of course, I would like it to roll into, obviously, next year too, um, because I know their, their recent submission for funds kind of outlined some administrative things that were outside of teen court, um, and so what I would have them do is probably resubmit that, um, with some of these things being specifically talked about, so.
One, one of the problems that I've seen with what the Boys and Girls Club does with juveniles is that if you have a juvenile that has, uh, a behavior problem that's related to a special needs issue, I'm not talking physical special needs as much as I'm talking mental health special needs, that they have, um, refused to allow those children in the facility, would that be something, when we're talking about this population that is going through court services because there's been issues, there are going to be a number of children that are going to fall into that category, will they be able to receive services?
I think so, um, I think a lot of times when we think of the Boys and Girls Club, we're thinking of those kids that are in elementary, middle school type age, but the, the, the only kids that would be going through this, this kind of new idea that I have would be going to the teen center, um, and the teen center is, it's in a separate building, separate activities, um, they're the ones that would be lining up activities for these juveniles, and so I think, as the whole community in, in recent months and years have, uh, I guess, trying to make themselves more acceptable to the, to those that have a mental health issue, I think that's a conversation that we can certainly move forward to with the Boys and Girls Club, I can't speak specifically to whether or not they would have, uh, services or be willing to accept those that, um, might be a risk to others, but, based on my conversations, I, I think we can get there eventually, so.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
So at this point, you'd like him to come back with a proposal of some sort with?
We're gonna talk budget, right? And we're gonna see if we've got $10,000 that we could allocate to that, I, I don't know that we necessarily have to have him come back with a proposal.
We can make that decision as we get through our budget discussion, whether we need that input, I mean, we don't get it from most of our other non-mated, non-mandated, uh, applications either, so, okay. Anything else, Dan?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on that.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, let's go through, uh, we've got a couple minutes here, let's do Commissioner reports, we'll start with Commissioner Pierce.
I have a very short report because I've been on vacation since our last meeting, but, um, there's been a lot of work going on in the community as relates to the, um, 20th Street over, interchange overpass, um, there have been several meetings, and you're all aware that the city did pass a resolution last Tuesday, committee, and I believe, Stacy, maybe you can correct me on this if I'm wrong, $2 million, up to $2 million toward the cost of the project, and that's why we now have that letter for, um, our chairman to sign, that'll go in with the grant program, and, and all of that's going to be submitted, I believe it's next Monday that it goes in, so, we'll see where we go, and that would be my report.
Good, Commissioner Boersma.
Um, Wednesday and Thursday, June 19th and 20th, I was in Mitchell for the Rural X Conference, and that's a, it's a program put on by Dakota Resources that's specifically geared towards serving local rural communities and economic development agencies, and so wanted to see what types of things existed there and connect with other small communities on behalf of the rural residents of Brookings County, um, lots of good information on rural economic development issues and things like that, so, um, I would imagine that there'll probably be further reporting out on that, or a, a memo that I can send out in, in greater detail. And then Friday, June 21st, was an all-day strategic planning session for Essential Behavioral Health, and that included board members and staff, and it was all part of future strategic planning and, um, direction for growth rebranding, um, and then discussions of additional services that they may roll out in the next year or two, and potentially five years, so it was a really good and productive day, they've got probably, I think, four new staff in the last three months, so it was good for board members to interact with those folks. Um, and then Wednesday, June 26th, met with Stacy to discuss further progress on the county lien process, as well as the Midary Monument Project, and she and I have been working with Dan, um, through that MOU process and communications with Rick Nicholson to move that project forward as well, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Krogman.
Yes, uh, 20th we had a partnership meeting there, oh, excuse me, sorry about that, 20th we had Growth Partnership, um, they're in the process of working on the financing portions of a new building out there, so that'll be some, some good stuff there, not in stone by any means, but, uh, working with, uh, another group on that to put another building out there. Also, the 24th, uh, had the BCOAC meeting, uh, at noon, and, uh, working on, uh, and also had multiple conversations with, uh, GFMP staff out at, out in Pier about our grant, and, um, about the ability to, that, uh, Pittman Roberts funds that we have, and utilizing those and getting those going in a timely fashion, and, uh, just reiterated with them that it's, um, we are gonna end up using probably 25 to 30,000 of that for this last year, but, um, we want to try to utilize as much as possible, so we've made the conversation of trying to widen the scope of those funds to be able to be used, and so, um, we're hoping to continue to, to keep that going on there, but, um, we want to utilize those funds as much as possible, so that was one of our, our main meetings there too. Uh, later that evening, had Brookings Health, um, had a presentation, uh, again, on mental health, uh, and the hospital's role and their participation in task force and their safe room that they have, um, that we then also had that agreement probably four or five years ago, Sheriff, I think, that, uh, they make that room, but then city or sheriff have, city police or sheriff has to provide staff for there if they ever use that, so, um, it's kind of our only safe room we have in town right now, um, but, uh, I had, um, and they've participated in a lot of the Essential Behavioral Health Board, they've always been a member of that, and so, it was a good presentation, very informative, again, um, and, uh, it's great to have them on board and are assessing, you know, and working with the mental health, uh, issues that we do have in town. So that was another good one, and then, uh, had a beta meeting on the 26th, um, looking at budgeting here, because, uh, we're getting towards the end of that, putting the budget together and approving the budget, um, and so, we're looking at funds on that, and then also, the 27th, I attended the DOT Highway 14 meeting for a stakeholder group, and, uh, discussed that earlier, so, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson.
On the 24th, had a BCOAC meeting, Brian kind of commented on that, uh, and on, uh, 28th, had intergovernmental meeting, uh, school, it was a long meeting, uh, with a lot of good discussion with the school, SDSU, the hospital, uh, city, and, uh, the 20th Street Overpass was also discussed, uh, we, uh, also received a call on some drainage concerns on the south end of Western Avenue, and then on the evening of the 26th, I did receive a call about 10 o'clock that night on the spill up north of Bruce, and I'd like to thank the Highway Department for being involved with that also, so, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, my report will be short, I did go to the STIP meeting in Watertown on Wednesday, the 26th, that's the Surface Transportation Improvement Project, it was, goes out to 23, uh, 20th Street Overpass is not on that STIP at this point, um, the gentleman up there with the DOT said that the, the discussion was to include it pending funding and some engineering, but not necessarily a funding for anything on construction costs, maybe some engineering costs, so it's not officially on their STIP review at this point. Um, we did have several projects that were on the STIP review in Brookings County, a lot of them were just, uh, state projects and not necessarily things that would involve our Highway Department. The BEDC, I attended their meeting at noon, uh, again, their, their jobs report came out, uh, they did mail a copy, I believe all of us should have gotten a copy this week on their jobs report and their economic, uh, impact in the community, so that was very positive and it looked good, and it was a very nice report, um, and that concludes my report. It is. Now 10:12, close enough to our executive session, so we're gonna move into executive session, in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1-2, 5-2, parentheses 3, consulting with legal counsel, parentheses 4, contract negotiations, parentheses 6, security, which is a new law in effect as of yesterday. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to enter executive session.
Second.
Okay, motion been made in second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose name? We'll move into executive session, we will come out and adjourn, and then we will reconvene as a public work session on the budget after that.